...as well as the community for providing much-needed input.
For a pool with a long storied and up until recently, secret history. In San Pedro, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Historians at Fort MacArthur say the tunnel was built to quickly evacuate soldiers from the barracks in case of enemy attack. While the oldest park in LA is in dire need of trees, local students plant them using innovative technique they learned on a field trip. Gil Reyes has more from Elysian Park. Gil?
We're one of these sixth graders from Elysian Valley Elementary School or among the volunteers helping out in this auspicious tree planting in Elysian Park. Well, let's face it, during this time of year, it's still pretty cool, but come summertime, a totally different story. We're gonna need more shade, but the city has a plan and a tree-planting technique that could be made in the shade.
And now we got all of our roots, right? So what you're gonna do with the roots, you're gonna beat 'em up a little bit.
These sixth graders are learning a lot.
Not enough trees, too much CO2 in the air. Yeah, so we're just taking a field trip to plant some trees and help the community.
125 more trees are planted today in Elysian Park, the second in a series of plantings to replace hundreds of trees lost during the drought. Trees that are needed for sustaining wildlife, shading, and reducing pollution. To the rescue is the group known as City Plants.
City Plants is a nonprofit that the city started to plant trees in Los Angeles, and we applied for a grant from Boise Project Up and the Arbor Day Foundation and Office Depot, and we won the grant to plant trees in Elysian Park with the landlife boxes that we'll be using today.
This thing's gonna be filled with water.
This relatively new method uses boxes known as landlife cocoons. These cocoons are filled with water, secured with a lid, and have strings attached to funnel moisture directly to the roots. Councilman Mitchell Farrell says it's a better way to plant.
Well, the old system is you just stick the root ball in the ground and you hope for the best. So this gives it a level of protection, and so far, the success rate of the first planting looks really good. We were always worried about gophers, because there's lots of gophers around here.
Protective screens are also buried to block any gophers. Teacher Steve Sabo says helping out is a pleasure for him and his students.
We're happy to be able to do something to help make this area better and to help the park, yeah, because we use it a lot.
In Elysian Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
It'll take a few years before the trees grow out. The goal is to plant 300. Well, a new executive directive puts LA on the road to build more transportation and housing more quickly and efficiently. More open spaces added to a popular hiking trail and a busy intersection in downtown LA gets the green light. All these stories in City B. Mayor Eric Garcetti strengthened the city's commitment to his inclusive, transit-oriented vision for Los Angeles, signing a new executive directive that will streamline transportation infrastructure projects, reform the planning process, and improve transparency at City Hall. Executive Directive 19 will help LA build the transportation infrastructure and affordable housing that voters funded through Measure M and Prop HHH last fall, while bringing long-awaited improvements to the city's development process. The mayor said that this executive directive is about making sure we put people before anything else, expanding opportunities to families that need affordable places to live, investing in building better ways to get around, and delivering on the city's promise to get the most vulnerable off the streets. Runyon Canyon Park, famous for its hiking trails and panoramic views of Los Angeles, is nearly 15 acres larger after the Department of Rec and Parks and the Trust for Public Land finalized the purchase of a nearly 15-acre property located at 2450 Solar Drive in the Hollywood Hills area. The purchase expands Runyon Canyon Park and permanently protects the parcel from development. The Trust for Public Land finalized the $8.75 million purchase of the adjacent open space, which was privately owned, using $4.5 million in funds it raised and $4.3 million from the city. The downtown LA intersection at Third and Omar in Little Tokyo just got safer for pedestrians after the installation of a much-needed traffic light. The Little Tokyo community has been asking for a new crosswalk at Third and Omar Street for years. Councilmember Jose Huizal worked with LADOT to ensure that a traffic light was installed to maximize safety. Many senior citizens who live at the nearby Little Tokyo Towers apartments use the crosswalk daily for medical appointments and other daily trips. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell is serious about getting fit, so serious, he's got a running challenge with the children in his district. Anna Margos takes us to his yearly fitness challenge and gets a workout herself.
A bit of fresh air and exercise does a body good. That's the idea behind Councilmember Mitchell Farrell's annual fitness challenge. He has invited about 100 fifth graders from schools in his district for a morning of fun and fitness.
It makes me feel tired and good, because it's healthy for me.
Olympian silver medalist Danny Harris has the kids revving up with hamstring stretches and warm-ups.
You don't have to be a great athlete to be in shape. You don't even have to be an athlete to be in shape. All you have to do is have the desire to be fit and to be healthy.
Today's menu of fitness challenges includes running, soccer, and gymnastics, or some form of it.
Fitness needs to come from fun, and if you have fun your whole life being fit, you're gonna keep fit, and you're gonna keep going and stay healthy.
Wanna make kids smarter? Have them do a few tumbles, flips, and jumps. I'm long out of school age, but it's never too late to get fit. Let's see how I do.
Experts say getting fit just might also make you smarter, healthier, and more successful. For Councilmember O'Farrell, it's a critical part of helping kids in his district get healthier, both physically and academically.
It would just be smart for school systems across the state to invest more heavily, or invest at all, in physical fitness. That is equal parts of a curriculum as important as math or science or anything else, and I think a lot of people don't realize that.
I couldn't do the cartwheels, but since there were handprints on it, when I put my hands in the handprints, they seemed easier.
Yeah, so you got better, right?
Yes.
So there it is, the secret to health, happiness, and a smart brain just might lie in popping out a few cartwheels, or maybe landing one of these flips. Okay, don't try it at home. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell is a trained gymnast, but just a little bit of exercise at whatever level you're at can go a long way. I'm Anna Margos for LA This Week.
Kids from five local schools took part in the challenge. Get up close and personal with all your favorite TV show stars. Let your kid's imagination run wild as they turn into explorers, and see LA like you've never seen it before. All this and this week's Things to Do. With countless Lego and found objects such as strings, boxes, and tape, The Autry presents a pop-up play space for imaginations to run wild. Explorers will discover how 19th-century kids played while traversing the Oregon Trail, how native communities have used natural materials to create toys, and how artists find inspiration through everyday materials. It all takes place on Sunday, March 26, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at The Autry in Griffith Park. Celebrate Center Theatre Group's 50th Anniversary Season with a pedestrian-based live art experience. You'll join a group of 50 people swarming out into LA on a guided audio tour. Meet up, put on headphones, and have your perspective changed. You are provided with a soundtrack to the streets, sights, and rooftops of Los Angeles. A computer-generated voice sets you out on a trail throughout the city, guiding your group's movement in real time. The performance reveals a secret Los Angeles continuing to places normally unseen, places where humans encounter their limits, places where crowds gather, and common areas seen through a new lens. The tours go until April 2. For more, visit CenterTheaterGroup.org. Paley Fest brings you together with the talent behind your favorite TV shows. Join the fun at Hollywood's famous Dolby Theatre as the hottest stars delight you with exclusive behind-the-scenes scoops, hilarious anecdotes, and breaking news stories about your favorite shows. Each Paley Fest event features a screening, followed by the stars onstage capped off with an audience Q&amp;A. On Saturday, March 25, get up close with the stars of Pretty Little Liars and Westworld. On Sunday, it's the cast and crew of Scandal. For details, visit media.palycenter.org. And that's a look at some things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityb.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Cindy, and I'm in Little Tokyo, and you're watching Channel 35, Your City, Your Channel.
Buenas tardes. Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes, por favor, si podré tener la atención de todos, por favor, tomen asiento. Hoy es miércoles 22. Quiero darles las bienvenidas a todos y a cada uno de ustedes. Este consejo se reúne todos los martes, miércoles y viernes. Y el público está bienvenido, señor secretario. Tenemos juicio, por favor. Llame a la lista.
Bloomfield, Buna Busta, Nocedia, Anderson, Rosario, Corazón, Martínez, Corazón. Son once miembros presentes y tenemos juicio. Gracias, señor. Muchas gracias. Ahora vamos a... Lo primero que tenemos que hacer es la aprobación de las actas. Señor Weezer, el señor Corretz, las segundas. A continuación, resoluciones comendatorias para la aprobación. Señor Sadio, el señor Harris Dawson, la segunda que sigue adelante. Señor presidente, el Departamento de Construcción y Seguridad recomienda que el... Los temas 1B, la propiedad ha sido determinada que es una vivienda que está ocupada por familia y también por lo tanto que está en sentado de procesadores. O sea, que vamos a plazar el tema número 24 martes 28, que es el próximo martes. Sin que haya ninguna objeción, esa va a ser la orden continua. Señor presidente, el tema del 1 a 19 son temas que están fijados para... Temas públicos. Tenemos tarjetas en todos los temas. Siga usted, señor presidente, el tema número 23, 27. Odisha pública ya se llevaron a... Y cuatro y el 27 han sido ya fijadas y circuladas para que la... Para que sean consideradas por el consejo. Vamos a solicitar que el tema número 20. Miembros. Me dijeron que el número 21 está bien. También 21, 22. Vamos a preparar a permitir nuestro voto de los temas restantes. Abramos la lista, cerremosla y sumemos los votos. Once sis. Sigue adelante, señor presidente. También hay una solicitud de enviar el número 27 adelante sin que haya ninguna objeción. Muy bien, señor. 28, 41, Odisha pública no se han llevado a cabo y se requieren diez votos para consideración. Sin que haya ninguna consideración, estos temas los tenemos presentes aquí en la junta. Tenemos tarjetas. Sí, tarjetas en todos los temas. Continúe. Señor presidente, nos llevan nosotros el número 42. Puertas cerradas, quiero usted mantenerlos en las puertas. Sí, póngalos a un momento, unos cuantos minutos hasta que nosotros... Hasta que yo habla con el señor Crecoria. Pero quisiera reconocer al señor Corretz.
Gracias, señor presidente. Quisiera pedirle que el tema número 36 devuelto a la comitiva. Okay, muy bien, y ya es... Señor secretario, sí señor. Ya ha sido. Bueno, yo creo que podemos nosotros hacer esto porque no lo referimos nosotros al tema número 36. Esto nos lleva a nosotros a dónde? Señor presidente, nos lleva al presidente a las presentaciones a temas que se consideran como temas especiales. Sí, yo creo que podemos dar inicio a esta reunión. Vamos a ver a la señorita Martínez y pedirle que, por favor, nos puede hacer el favor.
Le quería... Quisiera pedir que, por favor, podemos reconocer el número 27, por favor. Ya bien, señora presidente. Vamos a abrir la lista, ciérela y sume los votos. Once sis. Gracias. Muchas gracias, señor. Sí, muchas gracias, señor. Muchas gracias, señora presidente y miembros. Yo quisiera creer... Es más, quisiera yo que... Al resto del equipo que se coloquen detrás mío. Yo quisiera creer que... Que la mayoría de nosotros... La gran mayoría de nosotros que trabajamos aquí... Todas las noches tenemos la oportunidad de ir a casa... A una familia laboral y yo sé, yo tengo suerte. Yo creo que la mayoría de las personas que están acá tienen este oportunidad, esta prueba. Pero algo que yo sé y que todos nosotros tenemos, tenemos la oportunidad de venir a trabajar y estar con nuestros... Con nuestra familia laboral. Así que hoy yo quiero celebrar y reconozco... Un miembro muy, muy especial de nuestra familia laboral. Una persona que básicamente... Es un bebé de siete aquí del Consejo de la Ciudad. Su padre fue la persona que estaba a cargo de la ciudad, en la ciudad de Los Ángeles y trabajó aquí por 48 años. Su mamá, una estenógrafa, que trabajaba por muchos años y esto como ellos se conocieron. Y poquito después que se casaron y poquito después tuvimos a Mark. Nació Mark al poquito tiempo. Usted sabe que nosotros... Algunas personas podrían decir que ellos trabajan de ocho a cinco o de nueve a seis. Así que se trabajan doce días, doce horas. Yo no, realmente no sé cuánto tiempo Mark... Cuánto tiempo trabaja o cuánto tiempo trabaja, pero lo único que yo les puedo decir es que... Verdaderamente le quiero decir que él está en llamada, está disponible 24 horas, siete días. Si hay un miembro de este consejo que no ha llamado Mark en alguna hora así... Que no respetable le puedo decir a usted, le puedo garantizar que algunos miembros de su personal lo han hecho. A horas rarísimas de la noche y de la noche, él siempre está el disponible. Siempre está disponible, siempre ha respondido, siempre todo listo. Una de las... Una de los miembros de este personal más creativo que hayamos tenido en ninguna... Obviamente, obviamente uno de los mejores, él ha estado... Ha sido miembro de la familia de... Que ha estado por más de 32 años. Si recuerdo bien, con servicios generales, después de ahí, parque de segregación, después de ahí regreso, eventualmente se fue a servicios generales. Y usted sabe que una de las cosas que más... Que nosotros estamos felices a medida que usted empezó uno capítulo en su vida. Pero si nosotros creemos, si yo creo realmente en mi corazón, en mi... En mi alma, pensamos que todos somos familia y que todos nosotros queremos lo que... Cosas que nos comparan a nosotros que cuando nosotros vemos a uno de los miembros de esa familia que progresa. Yo no la veo todo el tiempo, de la manera... Yo creo que estoy acostumbrada a...
Es difícil no tenerte aquí. No querría ser el individuo que tenga que tomar tu lugar. Realmente no lo haría. Sé que todos hacemos lo mejor posible para tratarnos respetuosamente. Y sé que lo he hecho con Mark porque lo amo y sé que él lo sabe. Pero sé que lo ha hecho loco y imagino que todos lo hemos hecho. Pero de alguna manera mantuvo la misma actitud, el mismo tipo y logró hacer las cosas. Así que te vas a perder. Pero solo quiero referir esto antes de dejar que otros oradores digan algunas palabras sobre Mark. Mark es más que solo un miembro de nuestra familia que vemos aquí en la Cámara de Ciudad. Él tiene una vida, tiene hijos, tiene una esposa y tiene sus pasiones. Y una de las cosas que no sabía hasta recientemente fue que es un entrenador de baloncesto de la Liga. Y he entrenado deportes por tal vez 15 años consecutivamente, así que tengo aún más respeto por usted. Pero él entrenó el... ¿Es el de Montecristo Heights All-Stars? Quien entró 14-0 contra el entrenador Barrera. Hagamos un aplauso a este entrenador indefeito. Pero de todos modos, mi querido amigo, gracias. Por... Cuando se rompen los coches en medio de la calle, tomar una llamada después de las 12. Quiero agradecer a tu familia, a tu esposa por permitir que hagas este trabajo. Y lo que es más importante, agradecer a tus padres porque ellos son los que te mostraron el camino. Y Mark toda su vida profesional ha sido la vida de un sirviente público. Señoras y señores, Mark Barrera, hagamos un aplauso. Así que antes de que Mark hable, voy a referirme a la señora presidenta.
Señor Englander, por favor.
Gracias, buenas tardes. ¿Cómo estás? Mark Barrera. Así que... Cuando empecé a trabajar en el edificio, fue Greg Smith quien me dio la ayuda y dijo: "Hay cuatro personas, cuatro personas que realmente necesitas conocer." ¿Quieres saber dónde están enterrados y qué pasa y cómo funciona este lugar? Hay cuatro personas a las que necesitas acercarte. Hay cuatro personas a las que tienes que ser muy buenos amigos. Uno de ellos es Mark Barrera. Los otros fueron Eddie, Louis y Avac. Esos son los cuatro que dirigen esta ciudad. Esos son los que saben exactamente qué está pasando, todo el tiempo. Esos son los que quieres saber bien. Así que Mark y yo nos hicimos amigos. Él no era solo una persona que iba a cuando necesitaba algo. Me paraba todo el tiempo, nos sentábamos en su oficina, charlábamos sobre familia, sobre vida. Pero lo que es más importante y lo que es más interesante es que él sabría cosas que un día, creo que si alguna vez te sientas para escribir un libro, sorprenderá a mucha gente. No hay nadie alrededor de este chalet pero nuestros antepasores. Empecé con eso y tened cuidado. Y diré que él sabe cosas que han pasado. Ha encontrado cosas en los coches de la gente. Ha tenido esos llamados en medio de la noche para aparecer porque alguien necesitaba ayuda.
No para mí, señor.
Nadie alrededor de este chalet pero otros antes de nosotros. Pero él podría contar historias que, como diré, son sorprendentes, divertidas. De todos modos, un hombre muy bueno que dedicó su vida a hacer que nos... Una ciudad mejor, francamente. Porque solo somos tan buenos como las personas detrás de nosotros. Solo somos tan buenos como nuestro personal. Solo somos tan buenos como las personas con las que nos rodeamos. Y eres uno de esos personas que siempre ha estado allí para nosotros. Y siempre estaríamos allí para ti como lo hemos hecho. Te amo, hermano. Solo te deseo lo mejor y siempre serás un buen amigo. Dios te bendiga. Gracias.
Gracias, señor Englander. Señor Alfaro.
Gracias, señora presidenta. Quiero estar y hablar sobre servicios de la marina y cómo usted nos ayuda a servir a nuestros constituidores manteniendo los coches funcionando a su mayor capacidad. Estamos capaces debido al trabajo de servicios de la marina y del departamento de servicios generales de proporcionar servicios constituidores mejores en nuestros distritos. Porque podemos responder muy rápidamente a problemas que suceden, incluso emergencias, que hacemos en una base regular. Y el maravilloso privilegio y beneficio que es para nosotros ser capaces de tener coches para salir y ser responsables de los ciudadanos de la ciudad. Y eso es lo que hace la marina para nosotros, hace para nosotros como miembros del consejo y hace para muchos de nuestros miembros de nuestro campo para que puedan en su lugar proveer los servicios que nuestros constituidores merecen. Así que quiero agradecerle por eso. Y Mark, he tenido el gran placer de conocerte por casi 15 años ahora a través de diferentes iteraciones de mi carrera. Y siempre ha sido un placer y un privilegio trabajar con usted. Y como el señor Englander y como nuestro presidente mencionaron, su dedicación y devoción a asegurarnos de que tengamos vehículos funcionando todas las horas del día es bien establecido y muy apreciado por todos nosotros. Y hasta hoy, cuando paso por su oficina y miro y veo ese carácter que tienes, ese corte de cartulina, sigo pensando, Mark está aquí. 14 años después todavía estoy pensando que estás allí cuando es ese mismo corte de cartulina que ha estado allí durante 14 años. ¿Alguien más piensa lo mismo? Siempre es un shock, no importa lo que sea. No sé por qué es. Es como el día de la vaca. Pero usted y su equipo son fenomenales. Y el resto de la ciudad debe entender el tipo de sistema de apoyo que tenemos para ayudarnos a hacer nuestros trabajos mejores. Y es debido a los servicios generales y de la marina como una de las amenizas que tenemos que nos permite hacer eso. Así que, Mark, espero verte en Colombo y Eagle Rock de nuevo. Sé que ese es uno de tus lugares frecuentes y José también. Nosotros amamos Colombo. Así que nos veremos en la proximidad, en el barrio. Y les deseo mucha suerte en su retirada. Y, de nuevo, gracias por su servicio excepcional a todos nosotros a través de los años.
Señor Bloomfield.
Gracias. Solo quería agregar mi voz al coro. Mark, eres el tipo que iba a. Justo hablábamos de eso con mi equipo. Quiero decir, cuando muchas cosas se vuelven mal en la ciudad y la gente trata de... Bueno, a quién llamar en este problema. Cuando tenga que ver con los vehículos, mi equipo sabe que eres el tipo que iba a. Ellos te llegan, eres siempre tan bueno al respecto. Nos encanta trabajar con usted y hemos encantado trabajar con usted. Ahora, una cosa que la gente puede no saber sobre usted es que eres tan cool como un cucú bajo presión. Así que nos... Hablaste de la carretera de parada. Bueno, Mark me sacó. Él es el único que puede tocar la carretera de parada y tuve suerte lo suficiente durante una parada para poder conseguir la carretera de parada para la parada de Navidad. Y estaba en el carro y tenía a mi familia conmigo y estábamos en el camino de parada saludando a todos. Y luego el coche se rompe en medio de todo. Y hay flotantes detrás de nosotros, flotantes en frente de nosotros. Sabes, la mayoría de la gente está freakando. Tú no... Sabes, tu mano no se estancó en absoluto. Eres como... Volverá a la vida, dale un minuto. Y sabes, y eso sucedió una o dos veces. Me han dicho que la única vez que sucedió con ese coche. Fui el más afortunado para que sucediera. Pero gracias a Dios, eras el conductor porque tú exudiste confianza y eras como... No va a ser un problema, podemos hacerlo funcionar. Y eres como el reparador de las películas. Tú solo lo gestías. Y aprecio eso de ti, aprecio todo lo que haces y mi equipo lo aprecia. Quiero decir, a todos les encanta trabajar con usted y vas a ser grandemente, grandemente perdido. Así que gracias por todo lo que has hecho y por realmente ser tal ciudadano y miembro de familia.
Señor Corretz.
Bueno, solo quiero preguntar si podemos mantener un corte de cartulina de usted después de que se vaya. Sí, tengo que unirme al coro de personas que son agradecidas por su increíble trabajo. Has hecho mucho para ayudarme durante el tiempo que he estado en la Cámara de Ciudad. Y siempre con buen humor y siempre haciendo un trabajo terrificante. Así que solo quería agregar mi voz al coro de miembros del consejo que quieren agradecerle por todo su tiempo y toda su dedicación a nuestro consejo y a mí mismo y a todas las personas que fueron antes de nosotros. Así que muchas gracias.
Señor Sadio.
Mi hermano, ¿qué está pasando? Sabes, Herb, tú sabes esto. Hay muchas personas que conocemos y hemos conocido en nuestras careras que nos permiten hacer las cosas que hacemos. Son las personas detrás de nosotros que nos hacen exitosos. Mark, eres parte de eso y... Me gusta Mark por muchos motivos. Es un tipo cool, ¿verdad? Él es el tipo que cuando crecimos decíamos, él es un tipo cool, ¿verdad? Lo que quiero decir es que envoltas a muchos elementos diferentes sobre, sabes, quién eres. Hay muchos elementos diferentes que se envoltan en quién eres. Así que, por ejemplo, envoltas al primer distrito. Eres como un tipo cool del noreste, ¿verdad? Eres un Angelino de vida. Y en nuestra ciudad conoces a gente todo el tiempo que acaba de venir. Todo el mundo de Los Ángeles es de algún lugar, Cleveland, ¿verdad? Todo el mundo de Los Ángeles es de algún lugar excepto unas pocas personas, una puerta, son de LA, como tú y yo, ¿verdad? Fans de Dodgers, fans de Ram, viejo school, ¿verdad? Baby boomer. Tú eres para esta ciudad lo que se llama memoria institucional. Voy a ser político en esto. Tú eres la memoria institucional de este... De este edificio, de esta ciudad, de todo lo que ha pasado. De todas las personas que estuvieron aquí en el chalet, tú eres la persona que tiene esa memoria. El desafío para nosotros, tanto como ciudadana y nación, es que esta es una transición que está pasando. Y estamos perdiendo gente, como sabes, Herb, perdiendo gente que tiene esa memoria. Y es importante que eso se transmita. De hecho, uno de los desafíos de nuestro país es que no tenemos memoria. Así que repite errores a veces porque no tenemos esa memoria institucional. Tú eres un entrenador. Y como Herb dijo, hemos tenido muchos títulos, pero probablemente uno de los mejores títulos que alguien ha dado es llamarte entrenador. Y lo sabes. Cuando estás en la calle, en el supermercado, en algún lugar, y alguien dice, "¡Eh, entrenador!" "¡Eh, entrenador!" Y ves a tus jugadores crecer como jóvenes y los jóvenes se convierten en hombres y se convierten en buenos ciudadanos y buenos miembros de nuestra comunidad. Envoltas eso. Una cosa que creo que no se aprecia lo suficiente es que envoltas al trabajo público, el sector público, las personas que trabajan para el gobierno, ya sea la oficina de post o la ciudad, el condado, el estado. Y frecuentemente se ven malignos. Pero tú eres uno de los mejores ejemplos de por qué tenemos un trabajo público. Porque el trabajo público se preocupa por lo que hacen. Se preocupan por su trabajo, pero se preocupan por las personas que hacen el trabajo del trabajo público. Y así como dije, nos permites ser buenos en lo que hacemos. Así que, finalmente, lo último es que eres extraordinariamente competente. Tú sabes lo que estás haciendo. Recuerdo cuando empecé aquí, Arturo dijo, tú sabes, tienes que... Arturo es un carburador, tú eres un carburador. Tengo una gran... Mi padre era un mecánico, así que tengo una gran apreciación por ellos. No podía arreglar uno, pero tengo una gran apreciación por ellos. Y sabes, tienes esta increíble competencia. Tú eres, como mi colega dijo, el reparador. ¿Verdad? Hay un problema, hay una crisis, hay un momento donde las cosas necesitan ser arregladas y necesitamos a alguien que pueda venir y ser el reparador. Y eso es lo que eres. Así que, pero más de todo, creo que lo mejor es que eres un buen hombre de familia. Y apreciamos eso. Herb y yo hablamos de eso. Y sabes, tú eres... Tu deserves esto. No quiero verte ir. No queremos verte ir, pero lo deserves. Tienes derecho a ello. Tu familia ha hecho sacrificios. Hicieron muchos sacrificios porque no recibes las llamadas de nueve a cinco. Recibes esas llamadas que son, sabes, estás en la cena, es sábado por la noche, es domingo por la mañana demasiado temprano, como qué, ¿verdad? Y lo tomas. Has respondido la llamada. Así que para eso, como tu representante en el primer distrito, como tu consejero, pero como miembro de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, esta ciudad te agradece por tus años de servicio y nos agradecemos a tu familia por tu compromiso con la ciudad y con esta nación. Muchas gracias, hermano. Nos veremos pronto.
Señor Weezer.
Gracias mucho. Y Mark, trabajo bien hecho. Tú has exemplificado lo que significa ser un gran sirviente público. Pero, sobre todo, a nivel personal, eres un tipo de stand-up. He disfrutado de trabajar con usted. He disfrutado de nuestros debates. He disfrutado de simplemente saltar y hablar sobre familia y otras cosas. Pero lo que más me gustó de su trabajo fue que anticipaba problemas antes de que ellos ocurrieran y los arregló antes de que se convirtieran en problemas. Así que ese es el signo de un gran gerente. Y descubrí que la verdadera razón de tu retirada es para que pudieras ir a ver tu partido de Rams el domingo, aunque no estén en la ciudad, y en lugar de quedarse con nosotros. Pero está bien. Si pudiera hacer eso, también lo haría. Felicitaciones. Nos veremos incluso después de tu retirada. Muchas gracias, Mark. Thank you so much, Mark.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to present Mark to you. Mark, say a few words. Just give him another round of applause. You in charge.
Oh, wait a minute. Thank you all. That's, I'm not ready to say anything, but what I have to say, you probably all don't want to hear, so. I could talk about the midnight calls I got. In fact, I'd like to bring one up real quick because the person that called me on Christmas Eve is not here. But I did get a call at 12:30 in the morning on Christmas Eve back in 2007 or '06. And it was the City Hall operator asked, I told my wife not to answer the phone, but she answered it. It was the City Hall operator calling for Mark Barrera from Laura Chick. She had flown into LAX from South America and her Prius would not start.
Oh, I guess.
I felt like asking if she knew 800 Yellow Cab, but... Instead, I got in my car and I went down and picked her up at 1:00 in the morning on a rainy Christmas Eve. And she had someone with her and all their luggage. And the backseat of my truck was full of my son's presents, which had to go in the back of the truck so her luggage wouldn't get wet. And I drove her home and dropped her off in Echo Park at 2:00 in the morning on Christmas Eve. And it was very nice. The next day, she brought me a gallon of ice cream. Or two days later, after Christmas, she brought me a gallon of ice cream and a dozen doughnuts and said, thank you. So at least I was appreciated for that. So that's just one of the many stories that I'd like Councilman Englander to read my book. I just want to share one more quick thing. I know you're all busy, but Councilwoman Galanter, as you all, see, I could talk about these people because they're not here, right? She was driving her, I forget what kind of car it was, you know, everyone goes into another. She was driving her car at the Sepulveda Tunnel under the LAX airport. And we get a call at 8:00 in the morning, my colleague Art and I, we get a call, it's Ms. Galanter, Councilwoman Galanter. Mark, Mark, it's raining cats and dogs and I'm under the tunnel under the airport runway and it's filling up with water and my car won't go anywhere. Well, the pumping system had stopped and the tunnel was filling up with water. And she was panicking because her car was starting to float. So Art and I got a Crown Vic real quick. We sped down there. By the time we got there, she was floating in four feet of water. We had to swim out to her with a hook from a tow truck and hook her and drag her in like a fish. Thank goodness the car didn't fill up with water, but she was very grateful and she still stops by my office and reminds me of that to this day. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the, thank you.
So, Mark, from all of us to all of you, just a little token to let you know how much we, how much we're going to miss you, how much we appreciate everything that you've done, and how much all of us appreciate that when you told stories, you did not tell any about the members that are seated here today. Let's give it up again for Mark. You got it, Mark?
I got it. Thank you.
That's the wrong side. Okay.
Okay, members, we're going to go ahead and vote on items 21 and 22. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
We're going to send both items urgent forthwith, so let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes. Madam President, there's been a request to reconsider item 24.
All right, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes. And that item should now be continued to March 24.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Mr. Price, are you ready for your presentation, sir? Go ahead.
We are truly going to miss Mark. He's been a friend to us all. Someone else we're going to miss is standing right here next to me, our dear friend Bud Overm. He's been a friend to me and a friend to our city for many, many years. In fact, for those of you who know that his public service career really spans three decades, including 18 years as city manager in Burbank with distinction. But Bud has been a member of the LA City family for nearly 15 years, serving as Director of Redevelopment. And we've been lucky enough to have him as Executive Director of the Department of Convention and Tourism and Development, which includes oversight over the Los Angeles Convention Center for the past three and a half years. As Chair of Economic Development, which also oversees the Convention Center, I knew the city would, could rely on Bud to lead us through the transition of the new governance structure, and he's done admirably. Once a humdrum city building operating in the red, today the Convention Center is a thriving hub of economic activity and tourism. Come by the Convention Center any day of the week and you'll see hundreds of conventioneers wandering through the Convention Center, LA Live and beyond. And this activity isn't insignificant because with the increase in events and turisms at the Convention Center, we have an increased demand for hotels in nearby vicinity, which has increased revenues through the city's general fund by almost $50 million in the past four years alone. Thank you, Bud. Job well done. But I want you to know that, Bud, we appreciate your years of service, your passion, and your concern for economic development, community economic development in Los Angeles and the downtown area. And you're going to truly be missed. I trust that the days ahead, there will include many leisure visits to the Bud Overm Park in Burbank with your grandkids. But we really hope to see you here at the mini ribbon cuttings for our new downtown hotels and hopefully in the near future, a remodeled world-class Convention Center that's going to blow our competitors out of the water. Bud, congratulations on your service to our community's continued success. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, you got me. Give me a little time. Give me a little time.
Councilman, thank you very much. Excuse me.
Before you speak, we do have a member on the queue, Mr. Kocorian.
Yeah, we got some more folks here.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Price, for bringing Bud here for this very appropriate recognition and thanks for all of his years of service. I've known Bud really in two capacities. One, my capacity is a council member here where we've worked very closely in so many economic development projects that have been vitally important to the city. But before that, years ago, I was a resident of Burbank and got to work with Bud in that capacity as well, both at the time that I served on the school board there and worked on the Blue Ribbon Airport Commission and a number of other things. And what Bud did in Burbank was really kind of a miracle. Burbank suffered the loss of 20,000 jobs when Lockheed closed its plant there. And Bud was able to re-engineer the entire economy of that small city in order to absorb that loss and build an economic foundation that makes it the great success that it is now. And that really is one of Bud's great legacies. And he did it largely, he did it by focusing on developing the right kind of projects that attracted retail into Burbank, that attracted the entertainment industry into Burbank, and that produced large tax revenues that that city continues to enjoy today. And what I've appreciated the most is, in my current capacity, working on Bud in targeting Burbank to ensure that we bring those retail establishments back and those entertainment jobs back to Los Angeles and back from Burbank. So Bud, thank you so much for all of your years of service. You've really left a mark on two cities that will continue to pay dividends for many generations to come. It's a great legacy of which you should be proud and of which we're all very grateful. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, sir.
Paul, thank you very much. Councilman Price, thank you. Madam President, members of the council, thank you very much. I appreciate this recognition. I feel so unworthy following Mark. He's a bona fide second-generation, dyed-in-the-wool Angelino. I actually was a kind of a Johnny-come-lately. I served as city manager in three different cities 25 years before I came here. And I came here kind of on a lark. I'd been relatively successful in small city management. I wanted to see what it was like in the big city. And I had my friends tell me, my city manager friends tell me, you must be nuts. They pay a lot less, they work a lot harder, the problems are a lot more complex. Why would you give up the life of a city manager to go to LA? But the truth is, I have enjoyed each and every day of it. I've worked for three mayors, probably 40 council members, served in four executive positions under Han with the redevelopment agents, Vera Gosa with building and safety and deputy mayor, and of course with Mayor Garcetti in convention and tourism development. So I've enjoyed each and every day of it and I'm going to miss a lot of you and a lot of the work that you do. I have with me my city family, and all of you know that no department head can do anything without the excellent team they have. We have our, my assistant, assistant and assistant general manager, Tom Fields, assistant general manager, Diana Mungulu, Donna Jeans there, Kim's here taking pictures. Hi, Kim. And Chris and Adria. So all of us know that we can't do a job without the people behind you and I'm happy to have them behind me again today as they've always been. But in parting, again, thank you for this recognition for me, but thank you for what you do. Am I done? But thank you for what you do. The challenges that you face more than most cities and all cities face, the homeless crisis, the biggest moral issue of our time, affordable housing, good jobs, the budget deficit, immigration, these are all humongous challenges. If I was 30 years younger, I'd be happy to stay here and continue to work with you. But there's no getting back those 30 years. Somebody said I've been here three decades. Actually, this is my 47th year in public service. They gave me a stat that only 1% of the people in my age bracket are still working. 1%. The president happens to be in that same category, so it gives us a bad rap, but it's just 1% of the population is still working. So I've enjoyed my time. Most importantly, I thank you for all that you do on behalf of the people of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Madam President? Yes. Members, I'm prepared to tell you that in 1943, the President of the United States proclaimed March as Red Cross Month, calling on Americans to make a donation, volunteer, take a class, or to give blood. Across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responds to disasters big and small. In fact, every eight minutes, the organization responds to a community disaster, providing shelter, food, emotional support, and other necessities to those affected. It collects nearly 40% of our nation's blood supply and provides 24-hour support to military members, veterans and their families, teaches millions life-saving skills such as lifeguarding and CPR, and through its Restoring Family Links program connects family members separated by crisis, conflict, or migration. The American Red Cross Los Angeles region, with assistance of 5,915 volunteers, provides direct service assistance to the community locally every day. In 2016, the American Red Cross Los Angeles region provided disaster relief assistance to 2,541 clients, of which 668 were children. They installed 8,000 smoke alarms, they educated 2,800 homes about the importance of fire safety, they taught preparedness education to 35,000 individuals, and they assisted 1,200 people with military family emergency communication requests. They provided 10,000 comfort kits to veterans, including homeless veterans. This is a bunch of numbers that seem to have no meaning to anyone when you hear them. What is meaningful is on February 6th this year, there was a fire in the Pico Union area. And it's a community of low-income people who were unprepared for this disaster. And it was the Red Cross that stepped forward to make sure that we could house people who had just lost their homes, to make sure that they could bring comfort, emotional comfort, to people who are, lives had just been ripped asunder, who made sure that they could bring certainty and stability. And that's what the Red Cross is. It brings certainty and stability to people at the greatest moments of crisis in their lives. And so we are here today to honor and to thank the Red Cross for their work. We are adopting this resolution. The city proclaims the month of March to be the American Red Cross Month and urges all residents to show their support for the American Red Cross of the Los Angeles region. And finally, in this context, at this moment, when our nation is in crisis, particularly in my district, where parents have been taken from their children as they drop their kids off to school, the American Red Cross provides these services independent of legal status. They are the place and they are the cross that people know that they can go to at a moment of crisis. And for that, I am incredibly, incredibly thankful for their leadership, for their contribution, and for their efforts to bring stability and certainty to our community. Let me invite Jared Vardios from the CEO of the Red Cross to come and speak. We're also joined by Norma Vega, the Chief Strategy and External Relations Officer, and Raul Clados, Executive Director for the Northern Region, correct?
Yes.
So thank you so much. And Jared? You know, Mr. Sadio, can I jump in real quick before Jared? And first of all, I can't say enough about Jared. And we're so lucky to have you here in Los Angeles and running the show for the Red Cross. It has, you've been a breath of fresh air and the excitement and the energy that you bring is very positive. I can't say enough about Norma and just the rock, you know, whenever we need something, we can always depend on her. And of course, the pride that I feel every time I look at Raul, who's a former staff member of mine and one that I consider an adopted son. So I'm proud of you as well. But members, the Red Cross provides hope. The Red Cross is there when no one else is there. The Red Cross gets very few pats on the back because people take them for granted and just assume that if something goes wrong, that they're going to be there to take care of people. What we want to do here at the City of Los Angeles on this very important anniversary is to let you know how much we appreciate the work that you've done. I also want to recognize the hard-working ambassadors that are behind you. Let's give them a round of applause. And you know, when people think about Red Cross, they think about disasters. They think about fires, they think about floods. Last time you were here, I told the story about a fire that I had in my home, you know, a long time ago, and that you guys were there to assist me and my family. But given the weirdness that's going on in the world today, where it relates to maybe differences of opinion with the federal government, people don't know that the Red Cross is also...
differences of opinion with the federal government, people don't know that the Red Cross is also available to make sure that our immigrants are being properly cared for. And when you have incidents like we had at the airport not that long ago, that the Red Cross was there to make sure that people were fed, and if they needed medication, that they could get that medication. And that's just an aspect that a lot of people don't know. I know I didn't know that. So we are L.A., we are the light, and we're glad to have you here on our team as we do everything that we can to protect every resident, every resident and their family of the City of Los Angeles. Give it up for the Red Cross one more time.
Councilmember Sidi, Councilmember, Council President, Wesson. Madam President, through you to this esteemed body, it is a pleasure. My name is Jared Tomas Barrios. I'm the Executive Director of the Red Cross here in Los Angeles. I'm very excited and honored to be here with my colleagues, Norma Vega, Raul Clados, and our community ambassadors, representing a number of communities that are in your districts. And Sasha Mika, there she is, Sharon, and, oh, she's right over here, Osis Otasoli, who runs our faith-based programs. We have Kristen from Sherman Oaks, and Teresa's in the back, and Lisa over here. And they volunteer, like so many others, to be our face in your communities. This year, 2017, we are 100 years old. We turned 100, founded 100 years ago down the street at the Hotel Alexandria, when we were asked in Los Angeles by the President of the United States to support the installation, the standing-up of a military hospital in France, at a time when we were being let into World War I. Since then, we have become and remain the largest provider of services to veterans and active-duty military of any organization in the United States. We are the largest provider of blood products to hospitals in the United States, securing forty-three percent of the nation's blood supply. We educate more people in CPR and first aid than anybody else. Just two months ago, we had a class in the West Adams neighborhood, in a church basement, a free class that our mayor course taught. Five days later, one of the gentlemen in that class saved a coworker's life. A day laborer saved one of his coworker's lives from a class that we taught. There's nothing that gives you more pride in working for an organization than when you can say that you save lives. What you know us most for is our work in disaster response. We are there every time the fire department calls us. Hundreds of families in the City of L.A. every year receive support from the Red Cross. We provide hundreds of thousands of financial dollars in financial assistance to your constituents. No cost to the taxpayer. Through the generosity of Red Cross donors, we are here to support your constituents. And we don't ask anything, except that when you have a constituent that needs help, connect them to us. Help them support our effort to help them. Help us as well to support our efforts to prepare your constituents, because one day the big one is going to hit, and we want to build the most resilient communities in any city, in any city in this country, here in Los Angeles. And we couldn't do it without the great support of folks like Jeff Gurrell and Marissa Aho and ARAM, the folks in the city departments who we work with, with Chief Terrazas, and the fire department who we honored to work with, and of course, through all of you. You and your staff work so closely with us every day. It couldn't be a greater pleasure and an honor to be here before you today. Thank you for this recognition on behalf of all of us, your rainbow here in Los Angeles, all of our volunteers, all of our staff, who are so proud to work and support your constituents every day. Thank you very much.
With that, we declare March, American Red Cross Month.
So, there we go. How do you picture?
Of course.
Okay, so the camera's over here. Osis, you go over here. I'm going to be behind you. You're going to come up here next to me. You want me?
Yeah. Sticker. Yeah. Thank you.
If you guys can't see the camera, it can't see you, so...
We can. We can see.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go in the back and take more pictures.
You want to grab your purses for a little back and back pictures?
Grab your purses, ladies.
Are we going somewhere?
We're going back, we're going to the back, take more pictures. Grab your purse.
Members, we're going to go ahead and move to item 20. Is Mark Mitchell in the audience? Mr. Mitchell, do you want to come take a seat at the table, please? Thank you for joining us. And thank you for your patience. Mr. Wesson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I just wanted to rise and vouch for this young fellow and indicate that I have known him and his family for quite some time, his dad in particular, and their family is a family of service. This, Mark is very skilled, very knowledgeable, and in addition, I'm very impressed and pleased that you would have the time to, you know, be a part of the city family. So what I wanted was to have him say a few words about himself and some of the plans that he might have, and then I would recommend a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I'm honored to be considered for this position. I've served as a Zoo Commissioner for the last three and a half years and understand how the city works. It's a nice window into how the city works, how City Hall works. I'm a lifelong Angelino, born and raised here, having grown up on the West Side, now living in Hollywood. Family ties in South L.A., going to school in the Valley, so I think I have an understanding of how the city works and all the different parts of the city. So I'm excited to take on this work as L.A. continues to grow and for us to do it responsibly with thought around all the issues that are facing the city.
Members, anyone have any questions? Thank you much for your service, sir.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. Let's open the row, close the row, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for serving the City of Los Angeles. Okay, Mr. City Clerk, we're going to go ahead and move on to speaker cards. Mr. Previn, are you here?
And, Madam President, just for the record, there have been substantive amending motions to item 27, which have been posted and circulated. The public can comment on those if they wish.
Very well, thank you. Mr. Previn, just to remind you, you have submitted cards for public comments, item 1A, 1B, 27, 31, 33, 38, 39, 40, 42, 43, and 44. Go ahead, sir. Good morning.
Thank you. I think you put in a couple of special meeting items there. I'm not going to speak on those because we're not in the special meeting, but that's okay. Let's focus on item number 27, which was just amended courtesy of AVAC and the system, which is they go over and they stick something up on the bulletin board underneath the other presentations, and that constitutes an appropriate amendment. This is for an item that is the Financial Status Report, the third one for the year. It was heard in Budget and Finance Committee just the other day. Had a tough time for folks to come down. I was looking at it closely. I really wanted to get there. I got to be honest, I couldn't make it. $224 million deficit is what we're facing. Mayor Garcetti didn't have a chance to field that question before he was re-elected, so now the city has to kind of tighten the belt and figure out, what are we going to do about the financial burden? The city departments are going to be asked to look very closely for ways to get revenue, but worse, and this is always a bad news on a day when we're celebrating so many great city employees, find ways to tighten the belt, hold the hiring, don't move forward. And it's a bummer. It's a bummer because the money has been fed to lawyers like Strachan Fabel, who today, for the first time, is inching away from doing the wrong thing repeatedly in these meetings. The public does have a right to know how we're engaged in fighting our liability battles. I took a case all the way to the California Supreme Court, as you know, to ensure the right to see those records and to be aware of how we fight these legal battles. How do we? We do not close the door. We allow retaliations to take place, we get sued for it, and then the same attorneys keep coming back. If it were a DA or a federal prosecutor, obviously, they would immediately clean up the act. But here, we don't do that. We just allow the attorneys to continue through, and then Mr. Englander jumps up and goes, "We're not budgeting enough. We're just not budgeting enough for this liability stuff. What are we going to do? What are we going to do?" So what we're going to do is we're going to pay, and we're going forward. Not since 2011 have we dipped into our reserve fund, which is what we had to do, and we're taking something called judgment obligation bonds, which are a bitter pill. They're a bitter pill because to get 70 million, you got to pay 30 on top, just like a, it's like a payday loan. It's the worst. And that's what our city has done. Mr. Englander jumped up, the one guy who's against it, but he's totally for it, because Englander, Knobby, and Allen are the beneficiaries of lots of this business. By the way, the city attorneys and the LAFD, both are the ones who are causing the FSR sort of bad news. The LAFD, we approved all sorts of upgrades to staff up fire departments that we can't pay for yet. We're going to find a way by taking it out of residents through the Vision Zero program and for other ways that we can mop up revenue, but this is a dark day, in my opinion. On a day when we're letting go of some great employees who've done some good work, nobody could argue that, the city employees are going to have to suffer going forward. So I have 54 seconds. I'm going to shift to another item here. Item number one, we only have one. We've reduced a little bit the bleeding on these pernicious building and safety loans, so thank you for that. We've got one in my district only, 3884, out on Burbank Boulevard. That's $3,884. I think it looks like a longstanding fuel station that didn't do something right. Item number 40, a little credit to Bonin who skipped out today. RP Lorain and Associates, this is an appraisal firm, but when you do a deal with an appraisal firm and say, "Hey, let's double how much we're going to need them," the exclusive appraisal firm, "when we need them," you send a strong message, "We'd like the appraisal to come in where we'd like it to come." So that's why I don't really favor these kinds of panels of appraisals like that. We should be hiring an appraiser for... And what do they do, Mr. Price? I think you know they're eminent domain specialists. They find a way that when they get ready to make the taxiway a little bigger and stronger, like on today's agenda, they're going to roll in and settle people out. Now, I think your wife is in that business, so she would know something about it. Now, am I going to get to come back on the special meeting, public comment?
Go ahead, you have your...
My general public comment? I think it's hard for Angelinos to hear one windbag for so long, but I'll try. Fine. Public comment, my general public comment is the following. I guess the Ethics Commission is seeking advice, interestingly enough. They'd like to know how to improve their website, Mr. Kretz. Their website's fine, as I've said many times before. The problem is their mission. We need to do a mission check, Mr. Blumberfield. A mission check would give them the authority not just to look at the laws that were written by Krikorian et al. that make it impossible for people who are of ordinary stature to run for office in this community, but instead to look at the California Public Record Act, which allows us to see what our government officials are up to, and the Brown Act, which in this very hall, which is a majestic hall, Mr. Fabel, we want to be able to be heard and seen and, you know, respected, just like the rest of us. So I would ask that we, ask the Ethics Commission to provide that kind of a reach-out going forward, and then we could see possibly some changes down here at the most majestic John Farrow Chambers in the greatest city in the world, Mr. Buscayeno, with the possible exception of San Pedro, where I know you are holding court on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. We're going to move on to the next speaker. Herman, are you here? Are you going to speak, Mr. Herman? It doesn't appear like Mr. Herman is in any rush. Mr. Herman, you've filled out cards for general public comments, items 1A, 1B, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Excuse me, Mr. Herman, I'm letting you know what you're speaking on. 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 18, and 19. Go ahead.
(speaking Spanish) 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 (speaking Spanish)
You have to speak on items that are on the agenda. Mr. Herman, do you hear what I'm saying? Take his... Take him out. Take him out. Take him out. I'm removing you. I am removing you from the council. Now, just go on... Sergeants, help him. He's not moving fast enough.
So he is continuing to disturb the meeting, shouting, not leaving when instructed to.
No, look. You leave. No. You're disrupting the meeting. He's going to leave now. You're going to leave. No. You're disrupting the meetings, officers. No, just Mr. Herman is continuing to disrupt the meeting.
And as he stated, he's walking backwards so that he can take as long as possible to disrupt the meeting.
Yes.
And continuing to shout.
Everybody that prays, please pray for him. Okay. Who's next? And what are his items? 1 through 19, Mr. Spindler. 28 through 41.
All right. Very good. It is very hard to follow that type of act. I try. Number 1, hearing protest. Fuck item number 1. We do not like this. Item number 2, fuck number 2. We do not like this. Item number 3, fuck item number 3. We do not like this. Item number 4, fuck item number 4. We do not like this. Item number 5, fuck item number 5. We do not like this. Item number 6, well, no, fuck this. We do not like this. Item number 7, same thing. We do not like this. Fuck item number 7. Number 8, fuck item number 8. Item number 9, fuck item number 9. We do not like this. Item number 10, fuck item number 10. We, again, do not like this. Item number 11, ooh, see, I trick you. I support item number 11. No, I got you. Fuck item number 11. Number 12, fuck number 12. Number 13, fuck number 13. Number 14, fuck number 14. Number 15, fuck number 15. Number 16, fuck number 16. Number 17, double fuck number 17. Fuck the person who represents number 17. Now, we get number 18. Again, it is a detour. The detour... My English is so difficult. I'm sorry. Not my first language. Number 18, fuck number 18. Number 19, fuck number 19. Now, you know I cannot speak on these other items until I flip many, 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 many pages. City attorneys say I can speak on number 27. So the rookies say I can speak number 27. Fiscal status report, I have not read this document, but I know whatever is in it is a lie. So fuck number 27. Number 28, Jasmine Ortega, do not join these people here. These people here are no good. You are far better than them. Say no. 29, fuck number 29. Number 30, again, fuck number 30. Number 31, fuck number 31. And especially the person who sits in CD2, fuck him too. Number 32, fuck number 32. We do not like that. 33, fuck number 33. And 35, fuck number 35. And fuck you all.
Give him his minute for general public comment.
So I was reading today in the LA Times. Every time. Every time I pick up an LA Times, it's just another investigation. It's another investigation. Listen, rookie. Listen, rookie. You cannot be married to more than one woman, rookie. Why do we have people on the council married to more than one woman, rookie? Every time I read the LA Times, and there's Dakota Smith, Dakota Smith is like, "I got the wiggles. Wayne, call me back. Herman, call me back." And then she's writing about some other shit. Dakota Smith is a rookie. You're a rookie, Dakota Smith. You're just a rookie. You don't know how to goddamn write a goddamn story. So listen, rookie. You can't be married to more than one woman at one time and sit in the council.
Thank you. Thank you. Parents, this is what occurs when you don't feed your children fruits and vegetables. Anyway, so our next item. Mr. Walsh. And Mr. Walsh, you have items 1, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 34, B, C, and D.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or blogging at JWalshConfidential and tweeting at HollywoodDems. Number 1, nuisance abatement. This concerns... And actually, you do a pretty good job at nuisance abatement. My parents fed me lots of vegetables, and that's why I don't sound the way you would love me to sound. You would love me to act crazy so you could dismiss me. Number 28 is the next one. This is Doug Haynes, La Mirada Neighborhood Association. We have stopped a number of high risers. And 28 is City Ethics Commission, James Ortega. We checked. I remember standing here and saying, "Don't put this man on," and he was caught with kiddie porn. If you don't believe me, put in kiddie porn and LA City Council, and that's what comes out. 29 is Oro Vista Grove Street Lighting. Again, you do an excellent job on lighting. I don't... I can't do if you do a good job. I don't say you're all a bunch of crooks. I'm not that kind of white, angry white guy. Number 30, this again is hearing date for... You do a good job on more street maintenance. A number of these street jobs, establishing a hearing date for maintenance of Yucca Street in Las Palmas, street lighting. Again, all these street lighting jobs, you do an excellent job on. And increase the daily rate salaries and training stipend, classification of precinct board clerks. They make enough money now. We have almost a quarter of a billion dollars in debt, the city. A quarter of a billion dollars in debt, 224. And we don't need to hand out gifts to developers. Maybe 60% of the population in the city believes that, but they'll learn that we're right. Eventually, we will win. RANSCRO account program, this is another job where you do a good... You do a good area where you do a good job. But I'm saving what you do wrong for my public comment. And if you'll start my public comment...
Just give him his one minute.
General public comment. Okay, there'll be a May 16 runoff. We support 100% Gil Sadio. Oh, but you're all against all that he encompasses. No, no. Gil Sadio has done an excellent job. He has an excellent staff, and the reason... He fell short by a couple of votes from 50%, and we want Gil Sadio in there. And the other guy he's running against is an LA Times puppet that got the LA Times endorsement. Seventh district, this is Paul Krikorian's staff member, Torosian, is running against Monica Rodriguez. This is an Hispanic district. We don't need outsiders in there. Vote for Monica Torres. That's Tuesday, May 16. Garcetti... Oh, Garcetti did so well. He's going to run for governor. Yeah, he got 80% of the vote versus Zuma Dog. That's not hard to do. HollywoodHighlands.org. Go to our website now and go to our tweeting.
Okay, that closes the multiple section on our agenda. Mr. Harris-Dawson, it's my understanding you'd like to present some folk to us?
Yes. Thank you so much, Mr. President and colleagues. I just want to take a second during our meeting to recognize Reverend L.L. Johnson. He celebrated 50 years in ministry this past weekend in the heart of South Los Angeles. So we ask him to stand up, and let's give him a big city hall welcome. I'm sorry. Excuse me, Mr. President. 53 years of ministry.
Well, thank you for your 53 years. And as you could see, sir, we could use you here. There are a couple people you need to lay hands on. Thank you. Let's give them another round of applause. Welcome to City Hall. Thank you for your 53 years of service. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, now, why don't we move on items 2 through 19? Okay, members, let's open the roll, close the roll to tabulate the vote.
12 eyes. Very good, sir. At this point, would you like to vote on 27? It's as amended by motions 27A and 27B.
Let's do that. So on item 27, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Mr. President, if you'd like, we could also move items 28 through 31 at this time.
Let's do that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Mr. Clerk, what else would be available for us to move on at this point?
Items 37 through 41, sir.
All right, so that's what we'll do. Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close it, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask that item 27 be sent forthwith, please.
27 forthwith, per Mr. Krikorian's request. Item 32. I think we have a card. Do we have a Lynette Green on item 32? Lynette Green? No, Ms. Green? Well, let's vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes. Mr. President, I do believe we could vote on item 33 as well.
Okay, let's bring 33 up at this point. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That brings us where? Item 34, can we vote on that? We have a card, it's my understanding. Cards. So Jonathan Newsom, Denise Gray, Kevin Davis, Sherri Franklin, and is Mr. Browdy still here? Evan Browdy, Eric Max, please come forward. Go right ahead.
Good morning, counsel. Good morning, counsel and staff and citizens. My name is Jonathan Newsom. I'm the executive director for Long Beach Affordable Housing Coalition. We are the nonprofit organization that provides affordable housing and also the owners of 6400 West. And I'd like to state to the counsel and the public that we have worked long and hard for, since 2012, to end our status as REAP due to mismanagement of this property by our previous management staff. We have put more than half a million dollars of investment in improving West Park, including new decks, resurfacing walkways, open space, flooring, units, repairs of all types, onsite security, corrected major pest control issues, improved trash removal and onsite cleaning, installed new laundry service, to name a few. We've worked with the residents and tenants to establish a tenant council and support services. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I do have other people that signed up, I think, to speak on this issue. You may want to just let me call for the vote, and we can, I think, grant your request. So on this item, let us open the roll, close... Okay, now, we're going to take up item 35. I have some cards on item 35. Ms. McAllister, I think it's a... Yes, Ms. McAllister, come forward.
Do I get all my time or just one?
You get one minute.
Okay. 35, you want to take the taxpayers' money and pay for legal services for illegal aliens. I am against that. You don't pay for legal services for Americans who are citizens. I am against you giving an illegal alien a dime of my tax dollars. Once they break into this nation, they are criminals, and they are to be treated like criminals, okay? Thrown in jail. And I'm glad to read in the LA Times this morning that Sheriff Jim McDonald and jail officers are against sanctuary cities. It's on the front page of the LA Times. We are going to deport these illegals. I think that President Trump needs to send the army into California.
Get back on the item, Ms. McAllister.
This is the item. I'm talking about giving these illegal aliens money. Quit interrupting me. We need to send the army in here and arrest the politicians first who are aiding these illegals and giving them money, talking about giving them tax dollars to pay these Jews who are lawyers to represent these illegals. We need to throw them out of this country.
All right, next speaker, I think it's Ms. Rabia Sin. Yes.
I'm Rabia with Esperanza Community Housing Corporation. We work with low-income communities of color in South Central who daily face the intersections of racism and xenophobia. So we're glad to see your support for S349 that would provide access to counsel for those detained at our borders, and we think that you can do more right here in LA. For example, we strongly urge you to ensure that the LA Justice Fund is inclusive for all, that we protect all immigrants right here in Los Angeles facing detention and deportation. The current regime in DC daily affirms that its immigration policy is based on xenophobia and racism. We need all of you to affirm that you will stand in solidarity with all our communities and protect them by establishing that the LA Justice Fund is inclusive for all and rejecting any temptation to distinguish between good and bad immigrants and instead affirm their right to due process under the law. We also strongly urge you to support the California Values Act that would separate local law enforcement from ICE enforcement.
Thank you. So if I could have Andres Quan?
Andres Quan. I'm a proud immigrant from South America and an attorney at the ACLU. I, esteemed council members, first, thank you for your leadership over the years, most recently with the decriminalization of street vending. I would be amazed not to thank Councilmember Sadio for being, for decades, a champion for our rights as immigrants. As you know, these times pose a most serious threat to all of our civil liberties and particularly to our existence as immigrants in this great country we all call home. With the Muslim ban, for example, we've seen firsthand what this administration can do to attempt to dehumanize our fellow human beings. At the ACLU, we worked day and night to fight the unconstitutional ban. So now, more than ever, we need you to be the strongest and boldest you have ever been to stand with us, to stand with the people in making LA truly a sanctuary for all. In doing so, supporting Senator Harris is barely as important. Access to counsel to immigrants is downright deplorable, even for those who live among us right here in LA. So, of course, we must strengthen access to counsel extending to people detained as they seek to enter. But also, and more importantly, we urge the council to affirm and protect due process rights for all our immigrant Angelinos.
Thank you. Emma Lou McLean? Emma Lou McLean? Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. In fact, let me... Oh, scratch that. Mr. Harris-Dawson, is this...
No, I just wanted to...
Maybe it was inadvertent. Okay, so we'll vote on it. Let's now open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 and eyes.
Mr. Clerk, what's remaining?
Mr. President, I believe that leaves item 1A.
Okay, I have a card. Ms. McAllister, I have a card on 1A.
Mr. Counsel President, I am here for the voters, not for you. Not for you politicians.
No, I understand that. You're here to play by the rules, though. So go ahead.
The address is 10649 West Burbank Boulevard. This person is on the list for a lien on their house. Now, these charges that you have on this individual, non-compliance code, you won $660 from this homeowner, late charge collection fee at 250%, you won $2,490, and then system development surcharge fee, $285. Now, there are more fees for a total of $3,884. That means that the city is using usury. 250% is called usury, okay? That is too much. This man has to... Or woman has to pay almost $4,000 off the top just to give the city, not mentioning what they have to pay to get the violations fixed. Also, there's the Handy Worker Program. It's got 20 million in there. You can get $5,000. Let's use that money and give it to the homeowners and get it out of the politicians' pocket.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on the item. Let's open... In fact, I'm sorry, Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. On item 1A, there are extraordinary circumstances involving this property, and I'd ask that the inspection fee and the system development charge and the title report fee be imposed in the amount of $398.16, and that the rest of the fines and other charges that are subject to this lien be waived. So that the total amount would be $398.16.
Okay. Does he need a second? I'll second that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so on that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 and eyes.
Okay, Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Urgent forthwith on number 38, please.
38, let's vote first on urgent forthwith. Let's open the roll, close the roll... Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, that's sent urgent forthwith. Okay, I want to go into general public comment. Ms. McAllister, you can return. General public comment. Mr. Clerk, who else? Antonio Ramirez, please come forward. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, we just had an election. Mayor Garcetti got ten, there's only ten percent of the Californians or city of Los Angeles who even voting. They don't have much confidence in you guys. That means if you bring a hundred people in here, only ten are voting. And of course, we know most of the people in Los Angeles are illegal aliens. This is addressed to Ms. Martinez, who says she's concerned about children and prostitution. We would like for this council to write a motion to the governor striking down SB-1322, which legalizes child prostitution, rape, sodomy of infants to eighteen-year-olds. Now, the fifteen million illegal aliens in California, with seven million in Los Angeles, they're putting our children at risk of prostitution, because these illegal aliens are turning their children over to pimps, politicians, governors, mayors for prostitution and sodomy and rape in exchange for citizenship, okay? So they're putting all of our children in danger because pedophiles from around the world are coming to California to rape children legally.
Ms. Ramirez, if you want to speak, you need to come up. I called you. No, it's no one minute. It's time for you to speak now. It's time for you to speak now. She gets her one minute. Come on.
Thank you very much. I'd like to go ahead and say thank you to the LAPD. Officers, two officers were called out today to help me. I live at Transitional Shared Housing with Jessica and Robin Taylor and Ebony. They confronted me this morning as if in the past. They opened my door, locked, held the foot on the door, and tried to, they falsely imprisoned me. They blamed me for vandalism to the property, plugging up the toilets and putting holes on the wall. I then called the police for help. They wouldn't let me, and they said I had to get out today. These are three African-American women who are related to Pastor Chiuwan, Pastor Chiuwan Pam and Grace Pam and Florence Akuchi. And the beautiful officers that came was Officer Lozano and Cabral from the Los Angeles Police Department Southeast Area Division. And they helped me, and they said to the ladies, "You cannot throw her out. She committed no crime, and it's your word against hers. Leave her alone."
Thank you.
And that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, and that closes general public comment. Now, come on, Ms. Ramirez. Okay, we've, we've decided to close session. It's not necessary on item forty-two, and we will be taking no action, it's my understanding. That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, would council like to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
Please do.
Very good, sir. Bloomingfield, Bonnebusque, Englander, Harris-Dawson, Weiser, Carrasco, Correa, Martinez, Oferell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present. That brings us to items forty-three and forty-four. Mr. President, there have been requests to continue item forty-three to March thirty-first and continue item forty-four to March twenty-eighth.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Is there any additional business in this session?
Not in the special meeting, sir.
Okay, then why don't we adjourn it, return to the regular?
Very good, sir.
All right, so now, we're in regular session. That, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they're posted, and they're referred. Announcements, members, the announcements. If all could please rise for adjourning motions. If all could please rise for adjourning motions. I'm, I'm looking towards my left. And I'm going to call on Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, I, I adjourned in memory of my chief of staff's father-in-law. And today, I have another staff member who lost her father. And I'll tell you, I've never met and had the honor and privilege of meeting this, this man. But I've had the honor and the privilege of working with his daughter. And she is one of the most remarkable human beings I've ever met in my life. And it must be and has to be a reflection of him, because the way she speaks about him and how special she is only tells me what a kind of father and person he was. It's a great sadness that I adjourn in memory of Art Luteri, the father of my staff member, Kathy Luteri, who passed away on March fifteenth. He was born Attilio John Luteri, January twenty-eighth, nineteen thirty-five, the youngest of six children, the Ferdinand and Josephine Luteri. Art grew up in Brooklyn, New York. At eighteen years old, he decided to pursue his dream in baseball. He moved to Wisconsin to play in the minor leagues, debuted in the nineteen fifty-three Okinawa Giants, and hit a three oh three of four thirty-seven to five seventy with twenty-three home runs in a single season. Known for his Brooklyn style, Art would play for the Saint Cloud Rocks and the Eldorado Lions before finishing his career in nineteen fifty-six with the Lake Charles Giants. In fifty-seven, during the Korean War, Art was drafted into the U.S. Army and stationed out of Van Nuys, California Missile Base that is now Mohollon Junior High School. After the war, Art joined the United States Postal Service as a mailman for over twenty years. He lived in the San Fernando Valley until 2014, when he moved to Visalia. He's survived by his wife Jan, his daughter Kathy, son Scott, brothers Dominic and Frankie and grandsons Leonard, Joseph, and Billy. He'll be sorely missed by all of the CD-12 family and those in his family and friends. And his frequent visits and amazing smile, I know our staff spend a lot of time with, with him as well. And it always sadly leaves one of our own. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
I'm going to continue looking towards my left. I don't see any more to the left. I'm now looking to the right side. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, I'd ask that we adjourn this meeting in memory of a real giant in recent California history, a giant in the Democratic Party and in the practice of law.
Mr. Krikorian, please stop. Sergeants, the man has been removed from this chamber. He should not be allowed to holler back into the chamber making animal sounds. So please, and I'm Mr. City Attorney, I'm referring to Mr. Herman. His behavior is out of control, and I just want to go on the record of saying that, and we will no longer tolerate his behavior. Again, I apologize, Mr. Krikorian. If you would please start over, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, I'd ask that we adjourn this meeting in memory of someone who contributed mightily to the history of our state. He was a giant in Democratic politics and in the practice of law here in Southern California, former Attorney General John Vandykamp, who passed away at the age of eighty-one on Tuesday. John Vandykamp was born in Pasadena to a family that's kind of legendary in Southern California because of the Vandykamp bakeries that we all grew up with. At sixteen, he was off to Dartmouth to go to college, and after a brief foray in broadcasting, he graduated from Stanford Law School in his early twenties. So he's a phenomenal academic achiever. He served a short stint in the United States military before being appointed an Assistant U.S. Attorney, where he prosecuted federal felonies here in Southern California. He made an unsuccessful bid, running for Congress in the San Fernando Valley, and then was tapped to become Los Angeles's first federal public defender, switching sides from the prosecutorial to the defense of those accused. Five years later, he'd reverse roles again and became Los Angeles's District Attorney. In nineteen eighty-two, he was elected Attorney General. He was re-elected in nineteen eighty-six. And while he was Attorney General, he was instrumental in the state's early efforts to ban assault weapons and otherwise regulate gun violence and the easy availability of firearms. He was inspired to do so and to work with Senate President Pro Tem David Roberti in that regard after the Stockton Schoolyard shooting of nineteen eighty-nine. He also launched the Cal ID fingerprint system, in addition to creating special units to handle child abuse cases, sexual assault, and police shooting matters. In nineteen ninety, John Vandykamp was the early favorite to become California's next governor, but he lost a very narrow Democratic primary election to then-mayor of San Francisco, Dianne Feinstein, who in turn then went on to lose to U.S. Senator Pete Wilson in the general election. Following that election, John Vandykamp went into private practice and served as president of the California State Bar in 2004 and 2005. I had occasion to work with him when he was partner at Dewey Ballantyne, and I was a young lawyer there, and he was always a gentleman, a mentor, somebody who was patient with young lawyers and helped to bring us all along, and I will always appreciate that. He went on to practice at Mayor Brown, and after his retirement, remained a steadfast advocate for the public as he always had spent his entire life. John Vandykamp is survived by his wife Andrea and a daughter, Diana. He made an enormous contribution to this state, and our thoughts are with him and his fa, with his family and all those that he touched. May he rest in peace.
And I'll just add on to that, if I may, because I had the pleasure to, to meet him when I was in Sacramento. Something that a lot of people don't know, because of him being so respected, he was used to bring people together, kind of solve disputes, and a lot of kind of off-the-book type, you know, where you have people that have been going at it for years. He was the one person that could bring them all together, and he was just amazing. People that were Republicans, people that Democrats, they, they just really respected him. Plus, he was a class act, and he was a horseman. A lot of people don't know that he enjoyed the sport of horse racing and was, you know, very respected in those circles as well. He will be missed, Mr. Krikorian, and thank you for adjourning in his memory. Again, I'm looking to my right side. Any other adjourning motions? I don't see any. Members, this meeting is adjourned.